Rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's remain standing and join for a brief moment of silence as today is, what, the 75th anniversary?
Yes.
Of the Normandy invasion, D-Day. Many, many Americans lost their lives at that battle. So, in their memory, let's bow our heads in silence and, of course, we keep in our thoughts and prayers all those in uniform who each day defend our freedoms at home and around the world. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Sniderman?
Here.
Councilwoman Lobstad?
Here.
Councilwoman Flara?
Here.
Councilwoman Louvier?
Here.
Councilwoman Tebow?
Present.
All right, so we've got them all. All right, so we're going to start today with a water quality proposal to design and install a nitrogen-removing biofilter for West Hampton Beach High School. Let me ask you a question, I'm not seeing Dr. Gobler. Is he on the way?
He's right there.
He's like 10 seconds away.
Perfect.
Two.
Enter Dr. Gobler. I was going to stall and go on to a different topic until you got here, but, okay, so Dr. Gobler is here, we also are joined by Frank Russo, engineer, and with the New York State Center for Clean Water Technology, and Janice Sheer, our Assistant Town Planning Director. So who wants to kick this off? And Lisa Combreck is here, okay, involved with this too. All right, Lisa, you want to introduce it?
Sure, yes.
Okay.
Good morning, everybody. So as you know, we're in round two of the WQIP projects, and we heard a number of presentations with the Water Quality Advisory Board, and as you may recall, Janice Sheer recommended that we schedule work sessions on some of those projects prior to scheduling the public hearing. For today, we have the New York State Center for Clean Water Technology to present to you their proposal for this round of funding. You also have with you today a memo from Janice Sheer raising some questions regarding the proposal that we would also like addressed today.
Okay, who's next?
Can I just ask a question relative to the rounds, because we just had a hearing at the last town board meeting for, I think, three projects or four maybe? So is this part of that round or is this part of the second?
This is part of our 2019 round.
The first one.
So we usually do the two.
First round.
The first, well, it's the only round, honestly.
We could always add another one.
This is one of the four proposals that were in the public hearing.
This is in addition to?
In addition to that.
So unfortunately, you weren't here that day of the work session, we had a spreadsheet of about 12 different proposals.
Right.
And the way I said, well, it's, some of these are just bigger and a lot, take a little more thought and consideration than grouping them together, so we kind of are trying to batch them into groups.
Oh, is for the hearing purposes?
For the hearing purposes, but some of them, you know, for you to be more comfortable and understand, you know, what's being proposed and the questions the committee has asked and, you know, just to have that benefit, we scheduled the work session.
This wasn't on that initial list.
It is, it was.
It was?
Oh, absolutely.
At the hearing that we held?
No, not the hearing, that was our first batch of sort of like...
There's 12 total, I think?
Yeah, so some of them were batched, like, you know, why hold those while we're still sorting through the others?
Because you can move forward with those and...
Yeah, those were like, more will come.
These all sort of came in at the same time.
Everything came in at the same time and they're being looked at together, but at the same time, some were sort of, you know, not no-brainer, but pretty simple routine things that we can go forward with, others take some more thought and consideration, which we'll schedule work sessions for.
Okay.
So that's just how we're approaching it, so it's easier.
What is the, what's our funding allocation? So would it be based on, what, 2018's revenues or 2017's revenues?
18, right.
It's a, well, it was approximately 10 million, as you know, you reserve 4 million for East Quogue, you know, water main extensions.
Right.
And then we have about 2 million in acquisitions that are pending and, you know, working.
And then we had some for the sanitary rebates.
And then about 2 million for that. So there's about $2 million in potential award funding.
For 2019, based on 2018.
For 2019, for this round that we're talking about. This proposal, which you'll hear about, is broken into two phases. One phase is a site characterization report, which is really the nuts and bolts of like what they're going to do, and Chris and Frank will go into that about the specifics. That site characterization report is always required before you could really get into an actual project. So that's really step one, and that is what we are recommending you go forward with at this time and then, but you, to see the full picture, you have to understand that the full proposal includes a second phase, which is in excess of $1 million. It's, I think, 1.2 or 1.5 million.
So then, but just so for our purposes, so we know what we're allocating and prioritizing is everything that will be presented to us, whether it's in this batch or the next batch, all be within that allocated $10 million, so we're not going to be going over?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's actually within the 2 million.
But that's what I meant, within the two.
Mm-hmm.
Let that...
And we're going to break all that down, but because it's just a lot of different proposals, we want to be able to give you the benefit of hearing all of them as you should, and then we'll get into, you know, funding award allocations, but it is our just upfront recommendation that we at least go through with the site characterization component, but just so you know what the full breadth of this request is, I want you to be aware of.
We authorize the first.
And we've asked them to give that, give you a breakdown of what that, we've asked you to give them a breakdown of what that site characterization report will include, and they'll do that.
Tommy John, I was just asking, like, what happens if we approve the first part of it and either don't have an allocation in the round two for the second part of it the following year, or we have to be mindful then if we, if it's got a first phase and a second?
Yep.
When we're saying yes to this first, we're really also kind of committing to the second, we have to pull that out or starting with, with an allocation already in the year 2020.
Which is probably part of the purpose of what you're doing here today, to give us the overall picture.
Well, the commitment, we've debated this also at the committee of like...
And you've come to us and asked us about it.
Because we're not really asking you to commit the full breadth of it in this round, you would have to consider, because the site characterizations are really the details. So it comes down to whether you're willing to pay for that engineering detail upfront, whether they do it next year or in three years, you're going to have that upfront information done.
And we can decide.
And you can decide.
No, but it's not that, we've committed ourselves to a project, we've committed ourselves to finding out whether or not we want to commit ourselves to a project, which is the first step to anything.
Exactly.
Yeah, there's no, no glove fits all here, so it's important, some of these projects are multi-year.
Right.
And so the funding can, won't be consistent over those three years, it may be more upfront or less upfront depending on how you get to that point. So when we commit to a particular project, we're committing to a phase one, then will advise us that these are longer-term projects. Some, in some cases, it's, you know, the decision that we make at the outset will either let that go forward or not, but, you know, they're very diligent in presenting us those, what we're going to encumber over a period of time, so that we're not going to get to a point midway and then suddenly, you know, run out of funds.
Well, if you do commit the money to the site characterization and the school district said, like, we don't want to do it, then you did pay for that site characterization report and you didn't get an outcome that, you know, so there, so in our report, we recommend that you do have some level of commitment that they're going to move forward and actually implement, you know, this plan, if that's what, you know, but, but there is always this, you know, the planning and design of something is a phase one sort of thing that has to happen before you admit the money in the second phase. So it's right that it's broken down like that, but it just comes down to, you need to know that even if you did go forward, what that full scope really is, like you're saying.
To make sure we have the money to go in the second.
To make sure you have it or in future rounds, to keep it in mind, like, they want to go forward with this, you know, we've got this million-dollar thing, or can they provide a match, or is there other funding they can go for for this? So, so all those things have to get worked out, but right now, without the, and we went back and forth in the committee about, you know, and the consensus there is that if you don't start getting these site characterization reports done and know what you're facing, then you're not going to really get to that implementation piece. So it is worth assessing those things.
So it's sort of a feasibility study?
Pretty much.
So we'll know if you can even cite one of these systems?
And that's what they'll go through today, which they're pretty confident you can, obviously, but there's more to it.
Right, but then there's always a cost, so we don't know what, this will help determine what the cost will be of constructing it.
Gives us some visibility.
So it could be cost prohibitive.
Exactly, and we have asked like a, for a more detailed cost-benefit analysis as part of this site, not just a scientific site charac, or engineering site characterization, but a more robust cost-benefit analysis.
And there's nothing in the CPF, water quality authorization that prohibits funds being spent on this kind of feasibility study?
Not at all, it says for the planning, design, and, you know, characters, it has specific language.
As a matter of fact, just to make your reference, in the development of the legislation, that was exactly the, one of the, one of the concerns about when we have actual projects which are more complex, it's not like you're buying land, now you have a lot of engineering involved, that, that we're able to do it that way, and that was, that was actually quite a long interaction in the development of the legislation.
Currently, what is the, what's the role of the school district? Are they requesting this?
Yes.
They?
We have a letter from the superintendent as the applicant, and they would be going out to bid, they would be handling the project, and Chris can get into all of those considerations. But this is a school district project that would be like managed by Center for Clean Water Technology, who would then outsource the engineering component as well, so that it's a separate engineering firm that would be doing the site characterization.
Right, schools are not under local zoning law, they would have to get permitted from, from state ed, I believe.
I don't even think you need a permit for...
For a septic system, it's just a health department?
For NRB.
Well, this is a PRB-type system.
You need a health department approval, of course, but, but I, you know, I would let them go.
This is a PR...
It's one of the questions, it asks nitrogen removal.
Is it in the village or in the town?
What happens if Suffolk County Health Department denies or delays?
Right.
It's in here.
The school's within the village or the town? Probably village.
Village.
So it wouldn't go through us or Building Department anyway?
No, it doesn't anyway, only, we only, when it comes to sanitary systems in the IA world, we only get involved because there's an electrical component, electrical permit system.
And I guess the idea, we'll get into this, but, you know, focusing on schools where you have hundreds of students, hundreds of kids, you get a big bang for the buck because of all the sanitary effluent that is coming.
Right, and this has also been done, I believe, in Springs.
So rather than single-family homes, you get all the kids from the entire region.
Right, and that was, in the beginning of this program, we actually sent a letter to all the school districts, because we looked at them as, you know, this high-flush, you know, contributor, and so we sent a letter to every school district when Mary was here, asking for, you know, if you want, if you, you know, in your facility planning, if you're looking to upgrade, please let us know and, you know, try to reach out, and, and so this is our first school district that's doing that.
Okay.
So with that, Chris Gobler.
All right, we're ready.
We're ready for you now, Chris.
Okay, great. Good morning. I'd like to introduce you to Frank Russo, he's the Associate Director for the Center for Clean Water Technology. Frank came on with us in 2018, he had a 40-year career with H2M.
I didn't ask if he was still there.
He, no, no, he's now, he's now with us, actually, as Associate Director for Wastewater Initiatives. If you didn't know, he designed the tertiary treatment plans that are in Port Jefferson and in Patchog. He also designed the New York State's first-ever fertigation sewer treatment plant in Riverhead, and carried that through from being a, to being a tertiary plant and then eventually being used for fertigation. So we're, we're very blessed to have Frank on our team, he's bringing great innovation in what we're doing and is a full-on partner. I'm giving this presentation, but I'm sure I'll get to the point where I'll be stumped and he'll have the right answers.
No offense, Chris, but, you know, Christine Fenton, our town engineer, visited your center after Frank's been there for a little while, so we saw high-level practicality being instituted there, so I appreciate it and what you're doing, and I'm glad you're there, Frank. I've asked Christine Fenton to be...
Oh, great.
...here, because I think we're going to be talking about PRBs?
A little bit about NRBs, yeah, and wood chips, sure.
I was going to ask you, what's the difference between the PRB and an NRB?
Well, they...
Well, we're involved in giving some wood chips to another system, so I just wanted you to have, thank you, Christine, for coming upstairs, I just wanted you to be available.
Yeah, maybe I'll go through and then I'll get to NRBs, and then, if you remember, you can ask for your PRBs.
I'll go for you.
Okay, so I just wanted to give a background for this project, and I have some slides, obviously. I introduced myself and Frank, I'm the Director of the New York State Center for Clean Water Technology, founded at the behest of the Governor in 2015 at Stony Brook University. So this project is in West Hampton Beach High Schools, and so I'm going to focus first, and this is CPF and it's about water quality, so I just want to give some context here. These are groundwater nitrogen concentrations around West Hampton Beach Village and West Hampton in general, and you can see there are definitely hotspots in that region, in some cases over 20 milligrams per liter, which we know the EPA drinking water standard's 10, so, and that's just, you know, that you can see anywhere, whether it's in yellow or orange, that's all in the 10 range, and that, that's the danger zone really for groundwater.
So these are all contributory to the Money Bog?
Correct, exactly, that's exactly right. And so for the past eight years, with support from, or collaborating with News 12, we've been doing these water quality surveys of all of Long Island, Nassau, and Suffolk County, actually last night sent Bill Corbell the first one of 2019. It looks, it may look silly with the traffic signs, but what it essentially is doing is using state and federal standards for water quality on different parameters, if you could colorful, water clarity, oxygen, and then giving a quantitative metric for all of those relative to state and federal standards, and then, and then making it simple for public digest in order to just see whether good, fair, or poor relative to those things. Anyway, with a lot of data, we can focus on Money Bog Bay, for example, and this is, as I said, five years' worth of data. Of all of the stations, we look at 30, Money Bog Bay comes up second worst when it comes to water clarity, and obviously, of the many sites we have in the town of Southampton, it is the worst. The worst one is the Forge River. So obviously, water quali, these are algae levels, the total levels of chlorophyll, water clarity, and actually, of the 24 sites where we could get a bottom reading, came up as the worst water clarity. There are brown tides in this region all the time, you know, I'm sure that brown tides have contributed to the loss of shellfish and to eelgrass, and the brown tides are actually, this is like the epicenter for brown tide blooms. And this is no surprise, just as background context, why is this? Well, intense nitrogen loading, and you couldn't be further from the two ocean inlets, right? Dead in the middle between Chinook Inlet and Maritzes Inlet, and so that's the real danger zone. When you have poor flushing and high nitrogen loads, you know, this is not a surprise, we know these sorts of things are going to happen. Also, very low levels of oxygen, the DEC never wants to see below 3 milligrams per liter, we're seeing every summer levels well below that in this region. Just very briefly with regards to protection of marine habitats and salt marshes, of course, they're very interesting marine ecosystems, but they're also very important for protecting communities. And so the Money Bog Salt Marsh is what's being pointed to right there, and you can see that's very large and there's a lot of homes behind that. What I'll point out also is the anticipated sea level rise just by the middle of this century. And essentially, what you're seeing is if you look on the western bank of Money Bog Bay, you see homes that will be inundated due to flooding. And on the eastern bank, what you see is that this salt marsh is actually protecting the homes behind it against flooding. I could show you the 2100 map, it's even worse, of course. But Hurricane Sandy, a similar situation. The entire western bank was flooded during Hurricane Sandy, but on the eastern bank, many of those homes and roads were protected because that salt marsh was in place. About the same time Hurricane Sandy hit, a very important paper came out, really solidifying the relationship between high levels of nitrogen load and the loss of salt marshes. In this slide, what you see on the top are obviously just photographs of a healthy marsh, one heavily loaded with nitrogen, but on the bottom, from that paper that I'm citing right there, is a CAT scan of the roots of the salt marsh. And so what you see on the right is what happens when a salt marsh is overloaded with nitrogen. Essentially, the roots get weaker, they don't need to work as hard to get that nitrogen out, because there's so much nitrogen being provided to them, and therefore, the energy goes into making what's known as above-ground biomass, weaker below-ground biomass leads to the collapse of the salt marsh. And so while that was the flooding that was protection in the eastern bank during Hurricane Sandy in 2012, if we don't mitigate nitrogen load and we continue to lose that salt marsh that's left there, that creates a flooding hazard for this community as well. So before Frank joined us and when he was still with H2M, we worked together on a wastewater study for the village of West Hampton, where we looked at lots of different things, we delineated the entire watershed of West Hampton Beach Village, you can see that the entire, and the red is the full watershed of the village, the only water body that's fully in that watershed is Money Bog Bay. And so when we looked at the source of nitrogen to that system, you can see that it's 72% wastewater. As you can see, a fraction is from Main Street, that's being taken care of by the sewer treatment plant, but the very large majority still is from onsite systems, including the two schools being the largest source in this watershed. So again, this is, what this drafts basically is what the plan that came out for this, and again, had multiple phases. Phase one was connecting the downtown region to the airport, you're well aware of that, you're supporting that effort. Phases two and three are expanding the sewer district slightly to a place that makes sense and is feasible and cost-effective. But phase four came together when I was working with Mayor Moore, and I said, you know, let's, there are always in these cases of wanting to put in sewer districts, the idea that, oh, you just want to promote growth. And so I said, you know, and I know, and speaking with Mayor Moore, that she really wanted to address a very serious situation, if you've been to downtown West Hampton Beach and you go behind that Main Street, I mean, you know, the whole place is already underwater, and you know that the septic tank is just sitting there, so, you know, she knew that, and that's a real issue. But what I suggested to her is to have an additional phase, because it became very clear with regards to the sewage district that you wouldn't be able to sewer the entire village, which would be cost prohibitive. But why not have the initiative to put everything else on innovative and alternative systems to reduce that total nitrogen load because of the sensitivity of the receiving water body, Money Bog Bay? And so what this shows is how the different phases address the total nitrogen load from the village to Money Bog Bay. And you can see each step is a significant knockdown of the total amount of nitrogen loading, but that the IA systems is really what's going to have the biggest impact. So now turning to what we're doing in the Center for Clean Water Technology, we have our goal, we say 10, 10, 30. That goal is to design systems that reduce nitrogen below 10 milligrams per liter, we'd like them individually to cost less than $10,000 per home, and we want them to last at least 30 years. I can tell you that we've already achieved two of our three goals, we have systems that continually deliver less than 10 milligrams per liter, and they're based on technologies that will last more than 30 years, we think 50 years or beyond that. The cost is so far has been our biggest challenge, but we're working on that. So I'm just going to very briefly talk about our technologies and get right to the, the West Hampton Beach school situation. So we're all aware of how systems work now, they're designed specifically to hold on to the solids and release the liquid waste into groundwater. And as we now know, that liquid waste is where almost all the nitrogen is. And so these systems do remove very, very little nitrogen, it says 40 milligrams per liter, but that's way off, particularly for a school, where there is no laundry being done, and no shower, not as many showers being taken, so that wastewater is not being diluted, and, you know, I'll just be blunt here, the biggest source of nitrogen is actually urine, and so that's why wastewater nitrogen in schools is very, very concentrated. We have developed these NRBs, nitrogen-reducing biofilters, I just want to introduce those here, they're meant to be add-ons to any existing system, either residential or larger than that, like a school. How they operate essentially is using a technology that is common when there's not a waste, sewage treatment hookup, and that is something that is a drain field. So the wastewater gets distributed through a drain field, and underneath that is very simply two different layers, a layer of sand, for homes at least it's 18 inches, and the layer of sand mixed with wood chips. And so with that, just looking at how that looks, that sand layer performs something known as nitrification, takes the ammonium that's in wastewater, converts it to nitrate, and then that lower layer performs denitrification, removes the nitrogen because it converts that nitrate into nitrogen gas. And you need both of these steps in order to get that nitrogen removal.
Those are both anaerobic?
So the, the nitrification layer is aerobic, so if you look at the bar on the right, we have, to have nitrification, you need the oxygen, but to get denitrification, you actually need no oxygen whatsoever. And as you can see, we actually, to facilitate that, in some systems, we actually have a liner along the bottom. And so that creates this anoxic zone, and that's what allows for denitrification.
This is attached to an existing system, it's like another step in the process.
Exactly, exactly.
And how does the gas escape?
Uh, it just percolates up and through, and in fact, in some cases, we, in experiments, when we do this experimentally in the lab, if you seal the chamber, you can see the bubbles and the gas build up in...
It's a, it's a very, very good visual to show that.
Yeah, yeah.
And the oxygen doesn't go down?
80% nitrogen right now, so...
Say that once more.
And the oxygen doesn't go down to keep it anaerobic?
Uh, well, the oxygen does go down, so that lower layer, it stays down and stays So now, as I know you're aware, Article 19 passed in 2016, allowing the ability of Suffolk County to legally install these innovative and alternative systems, there are multiple systems out there, at least six that have been approved by the county, provisionally approved to be installed. I just put forth this figure here to show all of the systems that they're testing, including the provisionally installed ones, the text might be too small, but what it's showing is that the systems we've put in the ground in Suffolk County are outperforming all the other ones that are currently in the ground. There are some that are doing quite well, for example, the Fuji Clean System, but the data provided by Suffolk County shows that ours are actually doing better than those.
In terms of nitrogen reduction.
In terms of nitrogen reduction, but I'll also point out, you've queued up my next slide.
Can you go back one second?
Yeah, sure.
I'm trying to read it, so yours is the first and the second one, yeah.
Exactly, so those are our line and unlined systems that we've installed, and so all the other ones are just different companies that have...
The line that's doing the best.
Correct, and the liner gives the assurance that the system will stay with low oxygen, but it costs a little bit more. So the unlined system is simpler to install and also performs pretty well. And so you can see, there's several companies that have tried and are just not going to make it clearly in Suffolk County, and some were very surprised in Suffolk County, but there's others that are doing quite well and, and have already been approved. And some companies have done poorly and have come in and tried to address their systems and other companies have sort of folded up their tents and gone home, so to speak. But beyond nitrogen, I just also want to emphasize that these systems are doing an amazing job of removing drugs and pharmaceuticals from wastewater as well. And so what this shows is a list of, I think, about a dozen compounds that include antibiotics, drugs, different pharmaceuticals, there's also, I think, and let's see, caffeine, DEET and things like that. And then the, on the right, you see the percent of the influence that gets removed, and in many cases, it's 99%, or it's obviously almost all 90% and above, and this is significantly better than sewage treatment plants do. In fact, we just had a meeting about this on Monday as a center in trying to get a handle on exactly the mechanism, and it looks like the, the nitrifying bacteria, the ones in that top layer, seem to what is known as co-metabolize and break down these compounds. So beyond just nitrogen, these are doing a good job of cleaning up our, our groundwater, and of course, we all know, whatever doesn't discharge into surface waters, which I emphasize, we use to drink, and obviously, there's compounds we don't want in our drinking water.
But how about phosphorus?
Um, so phosphorus is, again, more than 90% removed by these systems, and, but actually by any system, because the phosphorus is, once the groundwater becomes oxygenated, binds with iron within the aquifer. So as long as there's oxygen present, you get really good removal of phosphorus.
Chris?
Yeah?
I'm trying to understand how the processes would possibly remove, you know, these chemical constituents. Are they just getting bound up or are they getting broken down?
No, it looks like, we, well firstly, I'll be perfectly honest, we don't know right now, but we have experiments. Frank has established at the university, the first ever waste, we called our wastewater research and innovation facility. It's literally a trailer that's now plumbed with wastewater from a pumping station, where we can now pump in real wastewater and perform experiments to answer that exact kind of question. You know, as you can imagine, wastewater, municipal wastewater, is a interesting cocktail that's very hard to replicate in a laboratory. But the research that's available to date demonstrates that there's this process, again,[1767.04] it's called co-metabolism, and the bacteria in that upper layer, that sand layer, the nitrifying bacteria, seem to co-metabolize and microbially break down these compounds.
That's amazing.
And I will also say that because we have an 18-inch layer in the way we design them, the water takes almost a day to pass through that layer, so it gives an enhanced time. So, there's a lot of bacterial activity going on in there anyway, and so, they've got time to react and act upon these compounds.
The bacteria's taking in the caffeine and the tylenol.
They're not taking it in, they're just breaking it down.
I was going to say, they're pretty happy.
Energetic. Pain-free and lots of energy.
No headaches.
It's all extra, sorry, I beg.
And I believe that those wood chips came from one of our facilities.
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, yeah.
Is that what you were going to say?
We're very grateful for that. It's been a great partnership, and John, you did come visit us and help facilitate it as well, so I think.
We provided the wood chips from?
Yes.
And we're providing wood chips to.
Well, we get, that's going to be on for discussion for the Springs School system that H2M is working on.
Which I'm going to talk about.
Yeah. So, that's why, I didn't mean to bring you from your work, but I just wanted to be sure that we were in that loop, and if we can help provide for these projects should the board decide to go forward with it. I don't know what the total amount is.
And this is a wonderful opportunity for the town as well to utilize some of our.
You've got to come up, Christine, I'm sorry. No one can hear you.
Okay.
Dr. Goble?
Yes.
Before you go on, this system works off of a standard septic tank, right?
Exactly. It has, our NRBs have one, they hook up to existing systems, and they have one dosing pump. So, that is, so the only moving part is a single dosing pump that provides, that takes the wastewater from the tank to the system on a regular basis, which prevents the system from being at the volumetric whim of the home or facility. That is, if you had a lot of showers or laundry being done, the system's not flooded, but rather, it gets a steady dose, which research has shown allows the bacteria to do their thing and be micro, essentially perform better than if they're just flooded all at once and then go dry and then flooded again, so to speak. So, getting on to the system we're looking at, so we're looking at here, West Hampton Beach Middle School and High School. This is the best rendering we have of their wastewater systems right now. A series of pools and rings that were installed. I believe one system was installed recently. It was the gentleman who was out there on the CPF who helped us decode it all the last time, he's not here. But one set was built, I think, in the 90s, and another set well before that. So, the idea would be to reroute the wastewater from these to an IA system, and then probably back into these. But just highlighting some of the points, Janice mentioned that we're looking at a two-stage approach to doing this. So, I just want to introduce what we're thinking about for this and how it breaks down in those two phases. So, the first phase would be CCWT partnering with the town, would be supporting it in part, and obviously with the school district, and then bringing on an engineering firm to work with them to come up with designs. So, firstly, we need to characterize the wastewater that's there, we need to know exactly what's in the wastewater, what the exact flows are, because you can't, if you, to properly design the system, you have to know that. So, we're proposing a five-day intensive study during the school year to know the exact characterization of what's in the wastewater, but also the exact flows, because right now, it's estimated on the number of people there. We then would have, again, partnering with the engineering firm, have a design report, as well as the preparation of construction plans and specifications. So, for this first phase, we're requesting $195,000 of CPF funds. We're donating $48,000 worth of our time and services. Our laboratories are what is known as ELAB certified environmental laboratory accreditation program, run by the New York State Department of Health. So, that is, our analyses are certifiable at the state and county level for nitrogen, for pathogens, from other compounds as well. And so, I'll just emphasize for this whole thing, we will, for this whole project, the center is not getting any money, we're giving money, because we think this is a really good project. And so, we're donating our time, Frank will be involved, I'll be involved, our laboratories will be involved. And it's through this phase, I just want to say also, so I've emphasized the NRB, but following our first meeting, and I'm going to emphasize further here, I'm not committing to installing an NRB at this location. What I'm committing to is coming, installing an IA low-nitrogen system that is going to be the most cost-effective for town dollars and do the best job of removing nitrogen. That may end up being that we simply install our NRB, it may be instead that we end up installing what we're doing similar to the Springs School, which we weren't involved in the design part. But in the Springs School, they put in a commercial IA system, and they're using our technology as what's known as a polishing step. So, we've designed an addition, an additional type of NRB we have, takes those wood chips and actually puts them in a box, and it actually is even more effective than that line system. And so, and that's what we're doing at the Springs School, so I'm like two slides ahead because I was going to talk about this.
But how does that work? Like, for people that don't, like, as a layperson, you're saying putting it in a box, a different line system? What does that mean?
Yeah. So, the NRB, you saw what the NRB looked like before, the two different layers, so I guess I'll just go back to show.
Which was fed by the original system?
Yep. I just, sorry about this, but it's worth, yeah. So, the box system works just like this system, except that, that lower layer is not there, and the sand layer feeds into a box that's filled with wood chips. And the waste, the nitrified wastewater flows through there, and it actually works even better with regards to reducing nitrogen.
Why?
Was that why, you said?
Yeah.
We think it's because it's all wood chips. And so, the sand's not in there, and the resin time's a little bit longer. And so, I mean, it's not, I will just say, it's marginally better, so it's like 4mg per liter versus like 6. And the other benefit of having it in a box that's separate is that if you ever wanted to replace the wood chips, you could just open the container and swap them.
Is that sort of how the nitric system works?
It's similar, very similar, yep.
Is there a leaching field off of the box with the wood chips?
So, the, after the box, it has to go to some final deposition. And so, I think I have the, I'm getting way out of order with my slides, but I think I have it somewhere in there. Maybe I'll just continue to go through this and then, so phase two would actually be the construction cost, or the construction of the system, and then the evaluation of the system. So, the construction would be done, obviously, by a construction firm, the evaluation would be done by the center, and we'd be evaluating its performance. And again, we're.
ELAP?
That's, again, the ELAB certification, environmental laboratory accreditation program that the state runs. And so, we, for this whole project, then, we'll be contributing and donating tens of thousands of state dollars that the state, we get in support from the state. And Suffolk County, Fortisworth, has pledged also for this project to put forward $10,000. They're very excited. We work very closely, of course, with the Department of Health. All of our systems are being tested through the Department of Health Services. And so, they believe that this is a great thing, they're aware of the Springs School, and this would be the first, obviously, type of, first installing a low-nitrogen system in the town of Southampton.
How long has the system been in, in the Springs School?
It isn't even in yet, actually. So, in fact, yeah.
Will they be, are the Springs School and this one considered pilot programs, or actual installations that they have, the county has said they're okay, and that's what we want?
Well, the county knows about this, and they are fully in favor of us doing this. Currently, our NRB systems are in the experimental phase within the county, but our data shows that, we could, our systems could probably collapse now, and we'd still make it to what's known as the next phase, the piloting phase. And then, a year of data brings that to the provisional phase. But within this, we're allowed to put in 10 systems of each of the different types, and we only have a handful of each, so.
Yes, Chris, in an application like this with a school, if you're going to go the NRB, if that's, if I'm saying that right, can kids play, like, can there be a lawn on top of it that's usable?
Correct.
And that's okay for kids to play on top of it?
Yes. Because, remember, the wastewater's being distributed several feet down, so.
And I think this is one of the reasons why schools and facilities make sense for your technology, because you need the broader space.
Yeah.
Some of the issues, obviously, that we've had is try to shoehorn some of this into these tighter spaces. So, the box idea is kind of interesting in that respect, too. So, you know, it makes perfect sense what you're suggesting to me.
Potentially could cut down on fertilization, cut down on irrigation?
But it depends, it depends on the final deposition. If we, what we think is going to be the most cost-effective is actually to run the way toward back to the existing leaching pools, in which case, there wouldn't be any irrigation benefit per se. We are working with the county, however, on some technologies that would involve some irrigation or fertigation, sort of, and.
You get, maybe you don't have enough data or time in the field with these systems, but, you know, our experience with the PRBs, maybe, are we seeing, do they settle the wood chips as they, you know, biodegrade? Do you see the earth starting to drop down?
They, we compact them as they're installed, so there shouldn't be a lot of compaction because of that. And also, when we do that as a singular layer, we are mixing it with sand also. So, they're being mixed, and so, it's not all wood chips that layer, it's sand. It's usually a 50/50 mix, and there's compaction as it goes along. Yeah.
Okay. But you can watch that, if you start to see the ground sinking a little bit, you can add more topsoil, I guess, sometimes.
Yeah, yeah. We haven't seen that thus far. So, a lot of words here, I hope I can even read through them all. So, again, I'm saying that we're not going to choose the exact system, because I think we'd love to see our NRB system go in there, but it may not make sense logistically, cost-wise. We do think, no matter what, that our polishing units are what, is what's going to give the lowest effluent. And so, I think we'll be driven by cost, and also feasibility, and also what gets us the lowest nitrogen. If we did do a lined NRB, we, Frank has estimated, we'd leave about a quarter acre of the field that would be adjacent to the high school, and as you pointed out, John, that is available. But again, we may consider a commercial system, and either way, we want to reuse the existing infrastructure, because typically, that results in a cost savings.
Is that polishing unit, is that above ground, or is that in-ground?
That's in-ground, yeah.
In-ground?
Yep. And again, we anticipate that we'll get the concentration of nitrogen below 5mg per liter with that polishing unit. So, just considering the existing use of school, these are estimates, obviously, we'll get a finer sense of this once we do our wastewater study, but we estimate, there's probably about 1,800 pounds of nitrogen being produced per year from this school, and we think we can be cutting that down by 95% with the systems, and therefore, removing 1,700 pounds of nitrogen per year from this watershed. And as I've emphasized in my introduction, and maybe I didn't say this, but I'll just say this now, I can't think of another location in the town of Southampton that needs nitrogen mitigation more than this location. Again, considering just the surface waters, but also protecting the community, and that's all marsh that's there.
Well, the Money Bog is the second-most impaired water body we have, correct?
Uh, well, second or first. Yeah, I mean, it would depend how you divide it up, and how much ownership you would take of the Pecanic River.
Right.
But as far as a full marine water body is fully in town as have the Hampton Waters, yeah, between Money Bog and Quantuck, that's, yeah. I mentioned the Springs School already, so we already don't really need this, but again, there's going to be a ribbon cutting for the installation of the system that's going to go on at the end of the month, I believe, and then we're expecting this summer for the install to happen. So, it's a, but it's a great, you know, it's a great project, because it's right on.
So, for extrapolation, on the, we're looking at 240 cubic, 1,000 cubic yards, is that correct? Or 240?
That's, I think, 240 yards, I believe.
Is it 240 yards, right?
That's what the contractor had asked for.
Okay. So, is that a comparable number that we would be looking at in West Hampton Springs? It's a smaller school, no, so it'd be about double that?
It depends on the alternative.
Yeah.
Depends on which system we go with.
Because I'm trying to link this, Councilwoman Lobstad had a great idea many years ago about, you know, taking our southern pine beetle, pine trees that have been destroyed by the southern pine beetle as a source as well. We produce a lot of oak already, so.
And I'll mention in our research trailer that we're actually doing experiments with oak and that exact pine, just to affirm that they're both performing equally well. We think that they will, yeah.
Are you concerned at all, because we've had so many issues with compost facilities and manganese, radionuclotides, and other things, that, you know, that basically using all these, you know, wood chip material might be introducing toxins, or is it all checked out before it's used?
We've done those experiments, and so, what we, what's very clear is, yes, when you create an anoxic environment, and you've got organic material that's in sand, you're going to leach out metals. But what's also clear is that 99.999999% of our groundwater is oxygenated. And so, we've done the experiments of what happens when that anoxic groundwater becomes re-oxygenated, and the bottom line is, all the metals that went into solution and are suddenly at high levels precipitate back out. And so, so for example, we've done the experiment, we take that, the anoxic groundwater that comes out of an NRB, and then run it through 18 inches of sand, and it's actually just in the very top layer, everything goes back to normal. And so, by the time you only get a few inches down, the groundwater looks like exactly as it did coming in. So, these are just what are known as redox reactions, right? So, you're creating an anoxic zone, some metals become more soluble, like manganese, like iron, and then some become less soluble, like copper, for example, and then it goes back. So, the only time that I'd be concerned would be if you had that anoxic water that was going towards a well. And that, you know, hopefully, would never be the case, because when they design homes, they always make sure that the well is not downstream of the wastewater.
Where is the Suffolk County wells for supplying local drinking water? I think they're above that watershed.
Yeah, they're up north of Gobretzky Airport, like, right in the Pine Barrens, yeah. So, just a couple of things about cost-benefit analysis, we were asked that by the CPF committee, and so, the, this project, Frank has estimated, would be the equivalent of sewer-ing about 60 homes, and the cost would be actually more for the installation compared to what this would be. And then, again, Frank prepared this, he rightly points out, the, we expect this to be done in two years, and, you know, you're not going to get 60 homes, you're not going to find 60 people and tell them in the next two years, you know, upgrade. So, we think this is a good alternative. And again, this will be the first public school in the town of Southampton to get CPF funds to address wastewater, so it could be a good blueprint for future efforts.
You're saying it's basically, the estimate is $25,000, and it would do as much nitrogen removal as $1.5 million, and if those were individual systems for homes?
Correct.
That is a much better bet for the buck.
Yeah. And then, you know, I spoke with Superintendent Mike Radeh of the whole, of the West Hampton Beach School District, and also, as many of the teachers there, and I'm sure we all can estimate, this is a great educational opportunity for students, you know, to essentially understand wastewater systems, understand the chemistry, we're going to be doing an analysis of the wastewater. So, we already have ties with the school district, but certainly, it's a great opportunity for them to learn more, and even, you know, maybe be involved in the design of things, and talk, you know, tell, show them what the alternatives are, and have them consider the optimal design.
It's interesting, when I, I was a science fair judge at the elementary school in Remsenberg, and a large, large percentage of those science experiments by the elementary school students were dealing with issues like this.
Yeah.
That's very promising.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Great thing.
This is probably too small to see in text, maybe it's not for you, but this just breaks down the cost of what we're estimating for the whole thing. But the bottom line, again, is that the first half of the request is $195,000 to do the design and construction, construction design and feasibility aspect of it. And then, the rest is just an estimate of what it would cost, because we won't know until we know what we're choosing.
Will you provide this PowerPoint to us?
Sure, absolutely. This is just a, yeah.
I have a different version.
Yeah, slight modification of what I sent the.
I'm a little confused, Chris, the total cost is what, $1?
$1.5 million.
For both phases, not proving.
For both phases.
What was that number you just showed me on the last slide?
$1.5 million.
No, but the, the system would cost $25,000 to?
Individual systems. But that's, I will also say, though, that's site-specific, so I think you get a $25,000 for any individual system if you're site, if you have a simple install.
Oh, so you were doing?
You're basing that on our.
This was $1.5, the other one was $25,000 for 60 homes, so.
Correct.
So, what is that, 25?
Per home.
25,000, right, per home, times 60 is how much?
I'm pointing into the rebate system.
Like, if everyone, 60 homes were to do it?
At $25,000, $1.5 million, I did it.
It's $1.5 million, and this is also $1.5 million?
Correct. Although it's.
And how, then it's not a better bet for the bucks, it's about the equivalent.
You're saying it was.
They're saying it was, they wouldn't even do it.
It's equivalent.
Equivalent.
But you're, you're.
Fertigating more nitrogen.
It's not really equivalent, because you're hopefully reducing a lot more nitrogen than our current systems do.
In a faster way, as well.
Yeah.
And the cost.
Right.
Yeah.
And the, assuming the school, too, has a higher nitrogen concentration.
I think we're.
Yeah, certainly.
That's pretty well, that's been pretty well studied.
Yeah.
My, my question about that, though, is the, the effectiveness of the system, you get this big drop-off, obviously, in use in September, in, at the end of the school year, for those few months, period. How does that affect the system? Is it, is it a question?
That's, that's excellent question.
We have to speak to Mike.
Yes, so, so, I mean, with sewer treatment in general, the bugs like to see a constant food supply. So here, we're cutting it off, periods in time, so we have to design around that. We do that by putting in equalization tanks, tanks that hold it during the period that, that they're not there. So that increases the overall cost. So, and we do that, well, we, when I was with H2M, that's what we did. We always put in a big tank, equalization tank, to buffer the flow.
And does it do it automatically, or is it mainly?
Yeah, everything is auto.
And many schools have activities over the summer, they have summer school.
They do.
They have staff that work, they also have camps, any camp sports.
So what we'll do.
Would that be enough to keep the system, the system going?
No. So it's based on pounds of loading.
Right.
So what we do is, we build it in segments. So we'll have a half, a left half and a right half, or we might do four, in quarters. So the system just gets valved off, and will continue to recirculate that. The system comes back very quickly. It, you know, as soon as you start supplying the wastewater, it'll come back very quickly. But that's some of the research that we need to do, and right now, we haven't been able to do it, because we don't have a full-scale installation to deal with.
So those equalization tanks, are they barometrically run, or?
They're off floats, it's just a function of.
Of the, the.
Yeah, the volume of the tank.
So you don't have to manually open and close the valves?
No, no, nothing's manual these days.
All right.
No.
Thanks, Frank.
And I think that's, I think I don't have any more, yeah, so.
All right, any other questions? Christine?
Thank you for asking me to come up, because this is a wonderful presentation, and I think it's also a wonderful opportunity for the town to reuse the wood chips that we're making as recycled product. We've been getting inundated with our, the material coming into the vegetative waste sites. So if this program catches on, and we can do it at other facilities, it'll, it'll be beneficial for us as well, in addition to being such a water quality benefit, so.
Thanks, Christine.
Is there, Christine, I mean, for the chips to be usable, is there a condition they need to be kept in? In other words, if they sit in the compost for too long, are they still usable?
Well, you bring up very, very good points, because generally, when our wood comes in, it's mixed loads of different species, it's got tree limbs with leaves on it, they really like the wood chips, and we've been focusing on the pine right now. But as Frank mentioned, we've been, they've been working with oak, which is also beneficial, because in addition to the pine beetle issue that we've been having, there's oak wilt, which is another devastating disease of, of trees. But we keep that wood logged until a certain time period before they need it, so that it doesn't get, when you chip woods and you don't mix it, it tends to gain a lot of heat, and has the potential to catch fire. So we like to, you know, bank our pine trees in a pile, and, and chip it special for them, and I believe it has to be two-inch chips, so we have to double-grind it, change out the, the grates in our mow bark. So, so it's a process?
Yeah, so you really can't use, like, a composted material, you have to use.
I would love it if we could do that, but.
It's a problem.
That would be wonderful.
All right, so it's basically.
That's what you guys need to study.
It's basically so fresh.
We actually are doing that experiment.
Great.
At the trailer, so we're looking, the third, the third type of wood, so we're looking at oak, pine, and then, like, the mix of, you know, whatever's available, and see if that does the same job.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
I have a question about the.
We have a lot of composts.
Funding.
Yes.
And the Center for Clean Water Technology. I know in Sag Harbor, in the village, that the town gave some money to have the village, the waters in the, in the harbor tested, and there was an issue between municipalities getting money over to the Center for Clean Water Technology.
Actually, that was not done by the Center for Clean Water Technology.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that's, that was done by my research lab, which is actually a different.
Different entity.
Yeah.
Thank you for me.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions for Chris? Bays are good, we?
So far, no brown ties, that's a good sign.
No brown ties, good. That's, that's a good thing. Anywhere, or just the Shinnecock Bay?
Uh, anywhere, so far, so far.
Okay, anything else we need to be aware of?
Uh, oh, you're, the governor, I'm meeting with the governor in two hours. He's coming to plant clams in Belle Forte.
Are we getting the clams for Shinnecock?
I hope so, I hope so. I know that the, the town lawyers are working on it, so.
Okay.
I think there's, there's small progress, I think, but, um.
Okay.
I'll certainly be asking the DUC about that today.
All right, good luck with that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Okay.
Thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Just so, to wrap up, if the board is comfortable, then I would like to put this on for a public hearing in our next batch. I just wanted to make sure that everyone felt good, okay?
Yes.
Cool, thank you very much.
Thanks, Janice.
Absolutely.
Thank you, miss.
Good point. Lisa, can I ask you a quick question while you're here about buildings? There's a number of properties that we've acquired, or in the process of acquiring, that have buildings. Can you put together a list of, sort of, the status of CPF-owned properties with buildings, and how they're being used? Which ones are scheduled for demolition? Which ones are just empty? There's a number of buildings. And what are allowable uses for buildings?
Yes, actually, this week earlier, I had a meeting with John Irwin and Kristen Dulles on this subject, because I understand there, we do have complaints occasionally on the condition of buildings on CPF properties, and so, between our two departments, we're making a master list of all the CPF properties that have buildings, who's responsible for maintaining them, whether they're scheduled to be demolished, if there's a stewardship agreement, and who that steward is.
Right, this is exactly what I'm looking for.
Right, and we, we have some.
People are asking if they, if we have any buildings that not-for-profits can use, and I'm not even sure what CPF allows.
Right, we have, we, between the two departments, we have different lists, so we're going to combine them, and then review them together, make sure we're in agreement on what's what, and then make a separate list for vacant properties where maintenance may still be required, either because of grass cutting, or restoration, wetlands restoration plan, or other plans to keep the property in good condition, fences that have been installed. So it'll probably take another week to 10 days to put all that together, and then we can bring that forward.
You might, I asked Ross to put together a CPF map based on use, so, you know, parks are, however, over the years, it's, they've, we've adopted these properties for what they've been used for. And he has that, that map, you know, set up already against the CPF categories.
Oh, good, okay. That would be great, thank you. And then we'll also include with that information a schedule of allowable uses, to the extent that I can determine that from the rules and regulations and the state law that we have.
That's great.
Unfortunately, it's not always 100% clear, but the rules and regulations are, are helpful, okay.
Thank you, Lisa.
All right, should we go to reviewing the, the draft agenda? So you should all have copies of it. This is for the June 11th meeting, that's next Tuesday, 1:00, it's afternoon meeting here at Town Hall. And we have a number of public hearings, seven in total. First one is for a CPF acquisition, Henry Hildreth Partnership, Randall Road LLC and North Sea. Second one is establishing a seasonal parking permit only on a portion of Long Lake Boulevard in Flanders. The third extends a three-hour parking area on School Street in Bridgehampton. The fourth one enacts Town Code Chapter 160, a mining reclamation requiring groundwater mining, groundwater monitoring for mining activities. The fifth is a public hearing to add Chapter 107, balloons to Town Code, this is the intentional release of balloons, helium balloons. Number six, public hearing, consider amending Town Code 330-79.1, temporary permit for accessory farm stands to permit vending vehicles as accessory to pre-existing farm stands. Number seven, combined public hearing for SDGIS amendment to Chapter 330 to add Article 32, Section 330, 421 through 330, 439, as deformed-based zoning overlay district entitled Hampton Bay's Downtown Overlay District. And that's it for public hearings. Then we go to resolutions. The first one, 31975, authorize this agreement with Applied Energy Group in order to participate in the South Fort Peak Savers Program, which will supply free LED lighting fixtures to the Town Hall renovation project.
32008 is an authorization for the Long Island Head Start to sublease part of the premises located at 271 Flanders Road Riverhead to the Children's Museum of the East End.
ID 31962, authorize the donation of a surplus boat to the Sag Harbor Volunteer Fire Department for fire patrol and rescue in the water boundaries of the town of Southampton.
32005 is an authorization for the supervisor to execute a 2019 stewardship agreement with Maureen Stafford Services at Good Ground Park in Hampton Bay, and I have an amendment on the second whereas, instead of saying December 1st through January 31st, it should say through December 31st.
Town Board Resolution ID 3.
Do we just, we? Just cross it out and put.
So we'll, we don't need, yeah.
Yeah, she has it.
You got it?
That's just a draft review.
Yep, exactly. All right, go ahead, Tom.
Town Board Resolution 31998, authorize the supervisor to execute a contract extension with Contemporary Computer Services Incorporated, CCSI, for management network services. Town Board Resolution 32010, authorize the supervisor to execute a contract with Contemporary Computer Services Incorporated for Jackson Avenue Fiber Backbone.
31988, authorize the supervisor to sign contract with Rogers and Taylor's Appraisal Inc. for appraisal at 493 Rosehill Road in Waterwell. 31991, awards an authorized supervisor to sign contract with J&amp;V Auto Salvage Inc. for removal of abandoned junk and decommissioned vehicles.
31993 is a 2019 request for proposals for Shinnecock Commercial Dock Capital Project Design.
31994, 2019 request for proposals for sale of development rights within the Southampton School District. 31961, amends the 19 to 23 capital budget for Town Hall improvements. 31959, authorizes closure of capital projects. 32006, authorizes highway fund pays you go for various equipment repairs.
32011, authorizes the Parks Department change order for Construction Consultants Inc. for the Poncog Beach redevelopment of the beach building.
31990, replace member of the Bridgehampton Beach Loser Control District Advisory Committee. 31974, authorize additional funds for Margolin with Basunder LLP to represent and defend the town with regard to the matter of Gufiti East End Inc. at Al versus Town of Southampton CBA and VLV Quag LLC at Al. 31941, authorize this Community Preservation Fund tax refund pursuant to the first-time homebuyer's exemption for Maximo, Ramondo, Penefiel, and Carmen Haraz.
Town Board Resolution ID 31953, to authorize facility use fee waiver for the Truth Community Church as it relates to the David W. Prohan Community Center.
31983, Home Rule Request Resolution supported Assembly Bill 7996 and Senate Bill 6206 as it relates to the alienation of parkland.
I have a question on that one.
Sure.
One, two, three, four, five. The sixth whereas, I'm not understanding.
Which one is that?
It says if it's determined that the fair market value of a Sabonic road property is not equal to or greater than the fair market value of the McGee Street property, the town shall dedicate the difference of the fair market value of the lands to be alienated and the lands to be dedicated for the acquisition of additional parklands under capital improvements to existing park and recreation facilities. I don't know what we're dedicating and where it's going, I don't understand that sentence.
Right, so this would be, basically, we're swapping the IGHL piece for the Tuckahoe Woods piece.
Right, no, I know what it says, I just don't.
One's bigger than the other, and one may be worth more, we're picking up.
Well, the Sabonic road is actually bigger substantially than the other, but I don't, but what are we, it's, it doesn't say what we're.
So if, I guess if the value of the McGee Street parcel is more than the Sabonic, then we will spend that much more on open space preservation to make it equal. I don't think that's the case, I think that.
You're going to use CPF to do that, or what are you saying? Like, where's that money coming from, where's it going? Doesn't, it's, you need to figure that out.
Is not equal or greater.
The way the sentence, it's just not a structured paragraph.
The town shall dedicate the difference of the fair market value of the lands to be alienated to the lands to be dedicated to acquisition of different parklands. I guess, yeah, I guess CPF would.
No, 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 it doesn't say CPF.
It'd be the other way around.
Right.
We would have to spend, I guess, that much money. I don't think that's going to be the case.
Can they work on this, and then explain it?
Yeah.
Because if, if, whether I agree with it or not, it just doesn't make sense the way it's written, or it's certainly open for interpretation.
I think the piece that's becoming parkland is probably more valuable.
It doesn't, you would think so, because it's a lot bigger.
And we would have to dedicate funds to recreational facility, perhaps, or open space.
Yeah, I don't know.
Right.
Whatever they meant.
Capital improvements to existing park and recreational facilities.
All right, so we, we could try to get those answers.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just, I'm language either way.
But the, just, so the board's aware, so the, the one piece, I guess it's Sabonic, Sabonic and McGee is, it was acquired for affordable housing through condemnation many years ago, I think it's 14 acres, a lot of, you know, through the years, people thought it was a nature preserve, and we've been trying to reconcile the fact that we took it for, to create affordable housing. An idea emerged with the IGHL piece, which is next to the, what's the name of that?
Tuckahoe Woods.
Well, it's, yeah, it's next to the.
Press property.
Press, thank you, the Press property, that that could actually be perfect, that we could combine the two and do some affordable housing there. So to swap the parcels, so I think it's a good idea, it's just the mechanics of it.
I don't know how I feel about it as an idea, but just the mechanics of it need to be vetted and understood.
Okay. 31960, recalls and amends Resolution 2019650 for the North Philip Streetscape and Pedestrian Enhancement Project proposed by the Spianical and St. George Civic Association.
31963, accepts maintenance bond in connection with the site plan application of Hampton Bay's Business District, Gobreski Airport, PDD, Days 11, or is that?
Two.
Two.
Two A.
All right, two A. 215 Rogers Way in West Hampton.
31972, appoints Michael Chi to Maintenance Enforcement Officer position.
31884 is a notice of public hearing to accept a deed of residential fee to be maintained as open space for Blair, from Blair K. Gaza, for properties located at North Hampton and North Sea pursuant to Southampton Town Code 244, death warrant.
31992 is a notice of public hearing to amend Article 19 of Chapter 330, Section 169 of the Town Code to increase the number of members on the Architectural Review Board from five to seven, and to increase terms from one year to four years. 31924 is a notice of public hearing on the acquisition of lands of Fishco. Uh, 31924 is a notice of public hearing on the acquisition of lands of Fish Co. Farms LLC, North Sea and Amenses CPF Management and Stewardship Planting, include stock property. Uh, 31691, authorizes acquisition of lands, Henry Hildreth, uh, limited partnership with the Randall Road LLC, North Sea and Amenses CPF Management and Stewardship Plant to include those properties. 31940, seeker for the Spionny North Philip Streetscape and pedestrian enhancement project application to the Suffolk County Downtown Revitalization Grant Program.
Question on the 31992, notice of public hearing on Chapter 19, Article 19 of Chapter 330, the Architectural Review Board, page 24. Where, where did that come from, why are we doing that?
Um, that was, um, something that I wanted to do to make our land use boards, uh, have similar numbers of people, so most of them, like, uh, you know, planning boards, zoning boards, most of the boards have seven members. Um, this board has five and sometimes has trouble with quarrels.
But if they have trouble with quarrels, making it larger.
Well, we're going to add more people who will, will come.
Okay, but if you're having a problem with people who are already not coming, wouldn't you just, I don't know?
Well, it's, right now they have five, but they need to, they get three in the room to have a meeting, right? So, if they have seven, they'll need to have four people there. Um, but if the additional two people come to every meeting, then it shouldn't be a problem.
I like the term of office aspect to this resolution, from one to four years to provide continuity for the board.
Yeah, so it's, it's.
Did you talk to the board that they requested?
No, I requested it.
So you didn't talk to the board?
Um, yeah, I can speak with the board.
Okay.
Okay. All right, uh, any other questions?
Uh, not a question, just a request, I'd like to be added as a cosponsor for ID number 31983, this is a, uh, request to support Assembly Bill 7996 and Senate Bill, this is the land.
What page is that?
Swap.
Alienation.
Alienation, thank you. Page 20.
Okay.
Okay.
You got that, now I'm quick.
I certainly do. Thank you.
All right, so, Jen, that's good to go, everybody?
Mm-hmm.
All right, Cindy, you can go ahead and publish that. Um, all right, let's do some updates and then executive session. So it's a couple, a couple things, so one is, you know, like, our beaches are off to a good start, um, our permit sales are, are very high, um, people loving the new Ponquag Beach Pavilion, uh, which was, I guess, full on Memorial Day weekend, um, we had to use the overflow parking lot, um, they've been very busy at the Parks Department with all the summer recreational programs. Um, we did have a department head meeting last week, uh, everybody's, you know, gearing up for the summer season as well as lots of changes here at Town Hall and starting the new HVAC system, um, and obviously we're setting up staging areas, uh, using the auditorium for, uh, we might be using it for some meetings as well as for some staging. And, uh, meetings normally held here on the second floor, um, will be affected, possibly moved to the auditorium during that time, uh, as needed. We have submitted our application for the ten million dollar, uh, DRI grant, uh, for the Riverside area, this is our fourth attempt, um, we're competing with seventeen other downtowns. And June 11th is the first of two informational meetings to be conducted by the Hampton Days Water District Management, 7:00 PM at the Hampton Days Community Center. And that's all that I have at the moment for updates. Anybody have any updates? Let me, John?
No.
At this time? John?
No.
Christine?
No. Julie? Yes.
Julie?
Sure. So, um, if anybody knows any fourteen to seventeen-year-olds out there, the Youth Bureau has a program called Broader Horizons, it's a paid internship program, um, you can get a job, uh, interning with town departments, community agencies or businesses, um, please get in an application by Monday, June 17th, and if you have more information, if you need more information, please call 631-702-2421, that's our Youth Bureau, and they will give you more info. So anybody looking for a job after school, great opportunity. Um, also, uh, 17th Annual Battle of the Bands coming up this, is it this Friday, June 14th? No, the following Friday, yeah.
What is it, June 14th?
June 14th, yeah, Friday, June 14th.
What time?
Ponquag Beach, uh, gates open at seven, show starts at eight, five-dollar admission, come on down. That's all I got.
Hopefully I got that. All right, and nobody else have anything? Okay, so, for executive session, acquisitions and confidential legal advice. All right, um, so I'll make a motion to close our regular work session during the executive session and designings.
Second.
Second by Councilman Sclera, all in favor?
Aye.